Everybody, um, start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We lost everybody. Okay, in the room, we have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Kowalski, Leila Matilla, Commissioner Coyle. Did I say it wrong again?
No, finally you got it right.
That got us on.
Commissioner Godu and myself, Brian Chiacchello. And then in Zoom, I apologize, it's really difficult for me to see with my old age, but I think I see the sheriff. I see Superintendent Henry.
Jason Smith.
Jason Smith.
And Jude.
And Jude Gates. Um, and then I'm sure others will will come in as as we move along. So we'll start with the agenda.
Yeah, they're on the bottom. You can read their names.
Yeah, I can't read them.
I I can.
It's like their agenda.
I move, uh, so first, we're going to address the meeting minutes, and I move to approve the February four first, two thousand and twenty-four public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additions, subtractions on the minutes or anything?
Oh, it's.
If it looks, anybody fine with that?
Thank you, Leila.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Accounts payable list.
I move to approve the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four accounts payable list total of four million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, yes. Uh, as you're well aware, I'm unhappy with the way the Harvey warrants are coming through in the past, but in this particular case, I haven't even seen the Harvey warrant yet.
Really?
And, um, I I I can't even comment on it until I take a look at it. Uh, maybe I missed it, but in any event, I suspect that it's the same as how it has been.
Sorry, may I, um, may I, uh, interject for a minute?
Sure.
It looks like it got it got sent to you twice. In fact, the warrant went to, uh, it looks like I have an email chain that says, it got sent to you on Wednesday. And, um, and then it got sent to all of us also on Wednesday. And I thought you were going to be more satisfied with it because there are even receipts in this. There are some receipts in this one.
Um, I looked for it in my email at home. I didn't find it.
It's just, I attached it, and in fact, there's a second file. They also, um, so Doug Jaffe has accounted breakout, um, furthermore, all the ARPA expenses by ARPA project. Who deals with different treasury projects. And it's like a ledger-sized sheet of paper, and that's usually not part of the warrant itself, so there should be two Adobe files attached that I sent you.
Yeah, you can look at it, but you can pull it off my email. It's right there. The email is Leila sent it to all of us. But, um, also Chuck noted that he sent it to you separately per your request. I, you know what? I was so impressed, actually.
Yeah, here it is.
Yeah, it's all there.
But I didn't find it on mine.
Yeah, but all the winter conditions are doing full detail.
I know, which is, first of all, impressive. I mean, there are all these winter conditions. Um, you know, I, what I was really impressed with is that the ARPA, we've got detailed out ARPA versus like capital fund. We, um, interestingly, on this warrant, there was nearly a million dollars for towards of the one point six, right? It was like nine and change towards ARPA and six eighty-eight, six hundred and eighty-eight K for, um, capital fund. So everything is detailed, um, quite well. We have a fairly significant savings from Pichet, which is like, he's the one doing the.
Yeah, it was four hundred thousand last month.
Yeah, exactly. And that's offset. We do have a few increases in cost, mostly due to, um, some change orders, mostly due to like weather-related issues. There's some change orders for winter conditions, essentially, but it's pretty much, it's largely offset by some of the savings from Pichet where. Anyway, I thought it was pretty well detailed out. We even had to the level of degree of savings, there was like a fifteen dollar return to Lowe's. Like, everything is, um, I think, well accounted for and.
All right, so. Well, in that case, I'll just abstain because I didn't have an opportunity to review it.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Abstain.
And I vote yes. Okay, uh, reports for commissioners. Anyone have any change?
Um, it's looking good out there. The skill is like very, um, I also, I guess, um, I maybe I'll defer to Leila here in like her effort to, uh, raise, she took it upon herself to, um, raise some money to buy roses for all the residents and has even exceeded what, uh, needed. And it's just like an example of, um, you know, being the change or sort of making a difference in other people's lives and, um, which we committed. Thank you for your efforts towards the red.
Good job, Leila.
Hey, thank you to everybody that, uh, that participated and contributed. Six hundred and sixty dollars.
Wow.
And budgets.
You forwarded to me, so I'll notice that came from you. And I'll find it when I get my thing. I don't have anything.
Okay, um, the only thing I have is last week, the, um, the delegation have that special committee for the building. Um, I did attend, um, at the delegation building. It went well. They hammered out a couple of few items, uh, additional items, uh, but they're well on their way. So I went through it for about an hour. Um, so I wanted to share that. And that's it for me. So now we're going to move on to American Red Cross use of facility request.
Yes, I move to approve the request for use of the Hilton Auditorium and waive the facility fee for the American Red Cross on May third, two thousand and twenty-four and November first, two thousand and twenty-four for flood drive events.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I vote yes. Brentwood, New Hampshire Democratic Committee use a facility?
I move to approve the request for the use of the Hilton Auditorium for Brentwood Democratic Committee on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four for Canada night.
Second.
Been made and seconded, um, discussion? I would think this is a little bit, this must be a little bit different than the norm, right? They were, they just gave doing some services.
Um, I think just they're doing a candidate night, so.
But I mean, are they, are they using IT stuff?
No, they're not. Not this, we understand.
Oh, this is a separate one than than the normal meeting, you mean?
There was a Rockingham County, uh, Democrat group that came previously. I.
They come monthly.
Oh, different group.
This is a different group, and I think that we should assume that they're not going, no one is going to use AV unless they specifically request it, then we deal with it then.
Yeah, okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
I vote yes. Department of Corrections, inmate administrative transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, transferring one inmate from Hillsborough County Department of Corrections percent pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B twenty-one is recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
I vote yes. Facilities, operations, ever-source interconnection agreement.
This point, do we have an update or should I move to table? Do you want to just, should I open? I'll open the motion.
Yeah, I would have the motion. I would say it should be tabled, so we can have a discussion.
So we have a, I, I'm going to move to table the ever-source interconnection agreement, but open the, uh, floor for and also open the floor for discussion.
Okay, so just on the technical side of things, a vote, a a motion to table cuts off debate, so would you reconsider? Um, and then we can table after.
I think we could just, okay. I, sure, I move to approve. It's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just discuss it.
Yeah.
No. If you make a motion to table.
I move to approve the ever-source interconnection agreement for the solar project.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded now. Discussion.
Okay, so.
We don't have problems.
Do you know we get an extra million dollars worth of coverage?
I'm gonna take it out of your picture.
Yeah, there was that much there. That would be awesome.
I I haven't heard of it, but I'm sure it's out there as far as having excess liability policy to get between the two and the three million. I recommend that we reach back out to David Bullock at Primex to see what he thinks, um, as far as could be the next steps. Obviously, it seems like EverSource is not going to budge off to three million dollars. And in in my email, um, to EverSource, I let them know that this is not going to be the first time that you're gonna run into this issue because, you know, whether it's Merrimack County or or other towns, the cities that they're considering, and it's it's a, you know, if you have any solar array of any substantial size, they're going to be on the five hundred kilowatt.
Right.
And so this is not going to be the first time that they're gonna run into this issue for New Hampshire. And obviously, while the senior counsel individual for EverSource didn't seem to have an issue, um, one or two others did. And so they're deciding to hold firm on the three million individual occurrence and aggregate. So I'll, if if with the commissioner's approval, I'll I'll reach back out to David Bullock, who did the initial comments actually by
Yeah.
Primex and see what he thinks should be the next course of action. If he can't really assist, then the thing would be, I could reach out like to maybe USI if you want. They used to be our transport broker on the property liability side. See if they know of any like excess loss.
If it goes over two million.
Yeah, but only two to three, but only only coming to two to three.
Right.
Yeah.
So my question on this, first of all, this is going to be a permanent insurance that we need to cover.
Unless we can.
Right? I mean, unless, unless a change, uh, there's a change.
Yeah, I believe so.
This is going to be moving forward for years to come.
I mean, maybe in the future, the Prime, Primex might change its cover limits. I mean, it's gone from one to two, so maybe at some point in the future, it might go to three, but.
Is it within EverSource's, uh, right to demand three million dollars of I mean, it's not like we can say, um, let's use a different.
Right.
That's what I mean.
I mean, this, this is like a contract, right? All we're gonna do is stop with, they've got, they've got us in a corner. And, um, I'm, I I I guess I'd like to take a a look at whether they're within their rights to demand that much. But.
Um, so there is a bill in Concord, I think SB thirteen ninety-one. I did reach out to Commissioner Coyle because, um, Senator Birdso and Senator natural, um, are on that, Etchula? With an A, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, if I mispronounced it. There was a bill thirteen ninety-one SB, and, um, it was dealing with, uh, this particular issue. And EverSource obviously testified against it.
Sure.
Because they, they, right, so, but my point being is that the legislators in Concord realize the the issue, and they're actually moving things forward. So from that standpoint, that that's good. I heard that it passed out of committee five to zero, and it's on a consent agenda for the Senate to vote, and then it will go to the House. So when it goes to the House, maybe we chime in there as well. I I I don't really see any issues, um, with the bill going through, but anyway.
And what does the bill say?
It, Chuck, have you, have you seen?
I I think it's about the time that they have to respond.
Right.
Because like in our case, they had our info October twenty-two, and yes, it takes three to four months to study, but that wasn't completed until about the end of December. We need to report till this January, so they, it's hopefully helped move things along, I think, for the process when there are solar projects or reports that it was always has to.
But does it limit the amount of insurance?
This one doesn't, but maybe that's a consideration for.
Something important in the future.
Yeah, and and so maybe hopefully if if we happen to have to get like an excess policy to cover two to three million, then hopefully it sort lived, and maybe we can, you know, get legislation to account.
It's it's establishing rules, interconnection rules, fixed rules. And so whereas now it's like the wild west. I hope it, but I think what we should, I mean, the reason that it's, I think, important is because it's the groundwork for.
For everyone else.
Right, and for down the road, addressing, maybe putting caps or limits on some of these things, which is what, you know, or maybe just doing it for municipal, whatever. There's lots of, I mean, that's a place where we could certainly, from a, from a municipal standpoint, try to
Yeah.
address legislatively and not unusual.
I think short term, we need to focus on temporary insurance.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to delay
No.
this interconnection.
Correct.
Because that will be a big disadvantage to us. Uh, so we're just gonna have to deal with that. But moving forward, I think that we need to question their insistence on this level of coverage.
Um, and see about, you know, yeah.
Um, I don't know if Jude wants to say anything at all. I I know that we wanted to sign this last week, so now it looks like we're pushing it off again. Um.
I think Godu makes the point exactly that it's definitely, it's going right to our schedule. They're not going to start ordering their equipment until this interconnected is signed, so whatever we can do to get us there. Um, and and Chuck, I thought there was a notation from EverSource about the indemnification as well, so I don't know if that's something else that you guys can look at.
Well, that's why I suggested that we first go back to David Bullock, who made the, you know, comments or suggestions in the first place.
Yes.
Obviously, Primex is very, I think, leery of granting extra indemnification, plus, you know, obviously, they're not going to cover anything extra beyond what's, what already, you know, their, our policy is.
Hmm.
All right.
So I don't know how the, how the commissioners feel about language about indemnification, because I'm sure they'll make some sort of one-sided for anything going above it.
Yeah.
So maybe, so, I mean, we really need to like put the, you know, accelerate this or get this moving. So I, I mean, first of all, thank you for, for everybody, for all the work and, you know, quick response time. I think Chuck, if you can reach out to Primex and we can try to get that, like, see where we are there, then figure out what we need to do to get to the finish line, and we can address both the indemnification with Primex and then any extra.
Because maybe if we are willing to adjust the vacation in this explicit instance, then maybe they'll cut the two million instead of the three.
That's right.
I wish they gave an example of what they would propose, but, uh, I'll go back to Mr. Bullock first for Primex and.
And I would also suggest that we consult with Merrimack County, because they are in the process of installing a, um,
Solar.
solar array. Uh, they may have some insight to this, or maybe we need to just discuss it to give them a heads up. They, they may not have, they're not at this point forward yet.
I can try email or call Ross Cunningham. I think he's more involved in the finance director up there regarding it. And also the facilities person up there is a bit more involved than the finance director is to the project.
Just, we're all on the same boat here.
Yeah, because maybe they're not aware that this is going, when they get to the connection agreement with EverSource, this is what they're going to be looking at for, you know, insurance requirement, and Primex is not gonna, yeah, I mean, it's it's the same coverage across the board.
Motion. All right, now I'll take a new motion, unless everybody's done.
Uh, now we have a motion, we need to vote.
Vote on it.
No, you can make a motion to table. Table motion takes priority. So someone want to make a table and motion?
I think we have to, I I do.
Okay, you don't know, I don't hear anything. So, okay, so on the motion to approve?
So I think we say no, and then or move, yeah, no.
Okay.
I'm a no.
Okay.
And then I move to table this, to table this agreement. I mean, it's like we're, we don't follow Robert's rules here. We're not bound to them. So to the extent that, from a forma, it's like.
Well, then, you know, I I'm just trying to run a meeting that's
However you want to do it.
That has, you know, some sort of
Okay.
organization. I mean, I don't get why there's a lot of push because I, you know, I'm I'm doing so. It doesn't make any sense, but whatever. Um, so motion fails, zero to three, and then a new motion to table.
Why, we've already failed.
Table. It's a vote and fail. We agreed not to sign it.
Okay.
We can renew a motion later.
All right, so now we're going to Human Resources, LNA Training Program.
I move to approve the LNA training program for DR as an American Rescue Plan Act ARPA project under Treasury Expenditure Category two point seven, job training assistant, not to exceed two thousand six hundred dollars per enrolled student as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
I vote yes. Exception request.
I move to approve an exception request to the two thousand and twenty-four per diem wage schedule for a long-term care services employee, LHS, recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services and, uh, Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, um, discussion.
I.
I I I like a little, a little explanation. I I mean, I read what was said, but with like doubling the the salary, and I think it's worthy of just a more detailed explanation.
Sure, so I, I mean, I'm happy to take it on if you want, or I can.
I thought Jason.
Jason can. Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely. Uh, so, um, we're federally mandated to have a certified infection control preventionist on staff. Um, as you are aware, the previous individual retired, um, and we have had no luck trying to recruit anyone for that particular position. Thus, um, the individual has come forward, um, and, uh, with our per diem rate is less than what the employee was making when they were hired here previously. I'm requesting that, uh, we increase the rate because we do need someone that is certified. Um, and without them coming at least once a day, um, we will fall short of regulation and will be deficient and not meeting regulations standards. We're seeing this.
Early discussion.
But as it relates to, I think, do, maybe we could speak to the rate that was sort of your question.
Well, yeah, but and is is this going to be limited to twelve hours a week for sure?
Absolutely. The the individual is only working eight, uh, seven and a half to eight hours a week currently.
But but depending on when state survey comes in and stuff like that, the additional few hours is going to be very impactful for them to have her on site in the event they come.
But the per diem rate is significantly lower than the salary, if you
Right.
apply the salary to a wage, and that's, I think, something, the bigger picture of looking at some of these per diem rates, because the per diem rates are so much, they're so off off from market that you know, this, it's a significant issue. And so like, it doesn't make sense. I think mostly the idea is who would be interested in your sa- having a salary rate with rollups that are so significantly higher than a per diem, who would want to still come and work?
So, Jason, if we only need this person on a per diem for eight to twelve hours a week, should we reconsider uh, what we're looking for for full-time employment as a part-time position?
Oh. So there's actually, we're looking at all of that presently. Right now, um, the work has been divvied up between, um, the Director of Nursing Services and the Assistant Director of Nursing Services, along with myself, along with Elaine, along with multiple people that have been pitching in to make sure that none of the balls drop.
So the reason it's only eight to twelve hours is because everybody else is picking up the other duties.
It's dispersed.
Okay, it's been dispersed. And what's, what are the qualifications for somebody in this that you're, that you're looking for?
Uh, LPN or RN and, uh, certified as an infection preventionist.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For the comment.
Okay, so if not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Yes. We're on to department head updates. I'll go with Allison first.
Um, we have the mandatory makeup sessions for anti-harassment and discrimination on February thirteenth and twentieth. We've reached out to all of the division directors and other staff to make sure those people that did not attend are going to be in attendance. Um, we have, uh, our first implementation session today with the legal assistants. Um, we have lunch and lunch sessions that are going to be held on December thirteenth, excuse me, February thirteenth and February twentieth from Health Watch. Um, we are working with just a number of different things. We are spending a lot of time on UKG Pro Dimensions um, in preparation for our first actual payroll with them. There's a lot of little things behind the scenes that are taking up a lot of time on both ends of the house here. But, um, both staff are working diligently on that to get that done. So that is, um, all we have right now going on. We're super busy and thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Chuck?
Um, as Allison said, we're dealing with some of the bumps in the road, I guess you you could say. Whenever you go live with a new system, that's when you really find out what's working or not.
How it really works.
Yeah, so so, uh, people's, individuals' balances, accrual balances and time off requests did come over the other day. The issue is that I think it might partially be a permissions issue that some of the notifications weren't showing. So Ben's been working through that as well as, um, some UKG individuals as far as trying to make sure that everyone sees the appropriate individual's time off requests. Um, so it's not necessarily like just me seeing my direct subordinates that I should be able to see, like everyone in my department, they should, they'll see all their requests. So things like that that are being worked out. Um, and again, you know, different things, whether it's, uh, the, you know, the availability of comments not fully showing, or again, some other smaller things. But this is how it is with any system when you first go live, that you really see what's truly working or not. Um, luckily, there's not, I guess, larger issues have come up, so, um, so I'm not going to go into the nitty-gritty about that stuff, but we're working through everything. Ben's putting a lot of time in, Carol's putting a lot of time in as far as testing these things out. Believe me, they even test like any situation. So Amy, Lisa, and and, uh, Leslie are very thorough with that. Um, that that update that we had from EverSource wasn't till after six o'clock last night. So this, you know, not lack of us reaching out or trying to have a separate meeting and stuff like that, but it it was after six last night, so it was not a fun way to end the day, but I mean, that's.
Thank you.
How it goes.
Thank you for working on it.
You're welcome. Um, just busy with many different things. Um, I say live on the agenda for next week, um, now that I've done that order and until thirty-one filing for, um, for the feds for ARPA, that I'll have a big updated thing now, analysis of of ARPA projects. Um, it's been rolled out here and there, but it's that big letters sheet that's probably about three, four, or five pages. I don't, we have many projects going on now, so it's, uh, and that's, and then from that, we can have, may have discussion as far as where some of the initial VOC allocations might be rearranged. Um, some of it will be rearranged by default because some of the stuff that we had under the, for the billing, under one point four for prevention of COVID in dense work sites. Um, portion of that will really now go to lost revenue because as far as wages, as far as, um, making sure we're clear of any Davis Bacon certified payroll issues. Um, and basically just really keeping the equipment and major materials within, uh, any million pieces that are not lost revenue. But the lost revenue piece, I think I already mentioned, is ended up being very close to where I had it from, uh, and from what's also denoted on the, um, on the the Harvey breakout. Um, I was guessing, I think, thirty-seven, thirty-eight million, and that's about where it ended up coming in. I think it was just like maybe a little bit shy. Um, but again, part of that is good news because we actually had better revenue in the first six months of this fiscal year. So, um, yes, so, yes, so it's a bad news, good news. Yes, it's a good problem to have that our, for instance, our private, um, pay revenue, our Medicare revenue is better. Looking out forward, I'm guessing that pressure will be about seven and a quarter million, set the budget five and so it's five. So we do have some positive things going on with revenue. This counter just on the loss for that near tactical nation. But still, it wasn't that far off from what projections I had done before.
Nice.
So, um, Jude and I met, um, yesterday, Robin, to go over some of the, um, furniture fixtures, equipment items for the the building as far as whether it's, um, TVs, all-in-one computer stuff, uh, made different varied clocks, like sheriff's office needs to dispatch and otherwise, um, as far as this right now, as far as what items are we going to buy directly and then Harvey just installs?
Mm-hmm.
Um, what things are we going to buy installed potentially? What items are we going to let Harvey use their kind of like, um, you know, negotiation as a bigger buyer of items to actually purchase directly, and then we, um, basically get faster in charge, but this is outside of GNP.
Yes.
So basically, the thought was, and it's always been the thought, that items for FFNE would come from the, uh, capital fund reserves.
Right.
Which we do have, like, three, four million.
But that was all part of the overall budget.
And that floor is intended back.
Originally, so when we look at our overall, yeah.
Yes, it was intended for the FFNE to come out of the existing capital fund reserves.
Right.
Um, so that was a ready plan for. Um, we can always budget a small amount to some of the departments' budgets under, whether it's sample or not, sample equipment as a little bit extra. Or do that as a portion of capital LA budget lining the legal fund too. Or do that as a portion of capital out, a budget lining the little fund too. Does those monies for capital act, they get moved over then like day one, they get in July, they get moved over to the capital.
Thanked, yeah.
Yeah. Um. And I'll just stop there because I obviously I could go on.
You can take a whole meeting.
Surprise, surprise. There is a, uh. Executive Committee meeting and officers meeting franchise scene next Friday. Um, I do have the, um, New Hampshire Peta Advisory Board meeting next Thursday, so I will miss the board meeting for next Thursday, but I'll be back for negotiations. Um, that's gonna be an interesting advisory board meeting because this is after the, um, Senate hearing on SB five fifty-three, so that'll be interesting.
Oh, just to note. You sent a, uh, explanation, a brief enough explanation that I could, um. Get it to a quick read and get, uh, senators to understand and I send each of the center senators. A request for them to to defeat this bill specifically with using your, um, was it thirty-four percent we're gonna lose?
Yeah, for our example, yeah, yeah. About forty thousand in in revenue.
Revenue. That's significant to all the towns and I I think that, um, we need to get some others. To use that, in fact, I'd be happy to send what I sent out, might want to share it with some other folks that are interested in talking to the centers. Because I don't think this is, I think this bill five five three is only good for the New Hampshire Banking Association and they much, they obviously have a better lobbying. Uh, arm than we do right at the moment, but I think that if we. Um, explain our position a little bit better. That they'll realize that they're all of their constituencies are going to get damaged by this.
Yeah.
So we we really, thi- this is completely nonpartisan and really should needs to be spoken to to everyone.
Right.
And and our revenue loss is just on a two million dollar.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's small. Others.
Investor.
We're.
Could have much more than that pool.
This is just looking out for the good of the communities.
Yeah, so when like when I testify, I was, you know, I, the counties were trying to also look out for the towns and cities who are gonna be hurt.
Right, that's right.
By this.
That's right, that's right.
So but to me, it's it's only the the banks that really benefit are the surefire winners in this.
Right.
Right.
Because they'll get six hundred billion dollars to their balance sheet.
Everybody's.
So.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they're the ones that's like relying on all this economic additional activity, so it's like trickle down.
Yeah.
And I I don't think that's realistic as far as the amount of taxes that were projected from a one-person firm that's actually just a trade name registered. For the individual.
Yeah.
I hope you know.
Nice.
Um, so it's it's like that much of it on one person's calculations and forecast, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Pat Conway and for the record, Pat's here. Uh, also for the record, Kathy Stacy had a help for us meeting. She couldn't be here, so. But yeah.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. We're we're doing great over here. We're super busy and I don't have anything new to report.
Oh, okay. Alright, Pat, good to see you. Um, I'm gonna go to Cheryl. You're on move, you, Cheryl. There you go.
Yep. Good morning. Um, nothing really new to report this week and, um, hope everybody has a good week.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna go to Jude, Jude and Rich.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, we have nothing new to report either. We're very busy. All the projects are progressing nicely. Um, you all know what we're working on as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Henry.
Good morning, everybody. A couple of things here. We're at one forty in-house. Shower project like you were saying is going well. Um, the door swipes on the admin area all been put in, all functional and they're working great, so we really appreciate that. Looks like we'll have another six, uh, staff members starting here in about a couple of weeks, which is good, so we're still having them roll in. And we're still losing some, obviously, but not nearly divine. We're losing before, but some of, you know, we lost another guy, went back to his federal job at double the money, so I mean. We're we're doing well. Working on budgets. Um, I will be myself the most superintendent, we didn't conquer it on Friday, testifying on HB. One, four, two, eight, uh, Representative Doug Rodgerville, basically that. Jails would not be able to turn anybody away from the PDs, including if they had acute illnesses or anything else, so they would just bypass all. Hospitals and we just have to take everybody and then we'd have to sit on everybody in the hospital and wait. It's written, that means including if their sentence was done because they're still in the hospital, it says we'd be, the way it's written. Um, while I understand the Chiefs of Police and the Sheriff's Department are not going to be there to support this bill. Um. So it's only written from Belmont County, uh, representatives, because then they have some difficulties over there. Next Tuesday, I will be at the Board of, um, Trustees for the Retirement System meeting. And I do have one question for Commissioners and maybe Jason Smith as well. Um, the Glendale contract, I believe is up in December. Um. That could have a huge impact on our budgets. If, I don't know if you're looking to do an extension through June, so that way when RFP for a brand new. Budget or if you're gonna do an RFP ahead of time, because I don't know those numbers, uh, it's gonna be a, I call it a SAG. A special A guess of what it might go up or down or whatever. I I don't know, so just a thought I'm throwing out there.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's actually really important.
So I just, just a thought.
The SAG.
I, Jake, may I, Commissioners, I just wanted to add that, yes, it is on our, uh, my radar for the contract here and. I think that we should have a further discussion around that contract in the future.
Very good, and beautiful segue. It's up to now on your report, Jason Smith.
Wow, uh, good morning, Commissioner. So, um, unfortunately, it's been all things COVID here, uh, in the nursing home. Um, in my report that I submitted yesterday, we've had a few new cases, so, uh, as of, excuse me, this morning. Uh, we have, I believe it's up to nine staff members and, uh, fifteen, uh, fif- excuse me, seventeen residents that have been diagnosed with COVID. Um, since the start of the outbreak, which was January fifteenth, which we timeline did, uh, we've had a total of eleven employees test positive and twenty-four residents. So we're continuing to see, uh, increase, um, numbers. We have implemented every procedure, every policy, uh, that we have written, um, to try to eradicate, uh, and prevent further spread. Um, however, uh, you know, we have family members and visitors that are coming in the nursing home that are not following protocols. Um, and so we are trying to provide more education to family members. Um, you know, in a COVID positive room, taking off your mask and sharing a donut with your mother may not be the best idea. Um, so we're we're working on those things, um, and trying to provide, um, uh, education, so. In my board report, I listed out all of the items that, uh, we have implemented. Um, in addition, just wanted to say thank you to Jude Gates and her team with the dishwasher. Uh, many thank yous to you, Jude. I bow to you. Uh, and your team making that happen. Um, our residents are very happy to actually be eating off of real plates and using real, uh. Cups, uh, so thank you very much. I know that will help offset all the additional, um, costs. Uh, that went into paper products, um, and the extended timeline, uh, that this, uh, delay has caused. So again, thank you, Jude. We still wait for the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services arrive to conduct their health inspection for our assisted living community. And, uh, just wanted to also say, uh, thank you to Leila. We were able to sell over three hundred and ninety roses. Um, and so, uh, many residents will have several different, uh, roses apparently. So, uh, we have more roses than residents, so thank you for all your support.
That's a good problem.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jason.
Alright, thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You too. I'm gonna go to Leila.
Morning. Um, not a whole lot to report. I did update the and posted. The non-county specials, uh, application and instructions, so we should start sending. I I got a phone call about that. From from someone new, so I I said, yes, absolutely, go ahead and apply.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I got that updated and posted.
Oh, very good, very good.
That's great, thank you.
That's it. Okay, very good. Alright, um, any new business or old business?
I'll start with the walk-in, dude.
No, I think it's that sort of.
I moved to, yeah, exactly, the electric bill. I moved to approve the February eighth, twenty twenty-four accounts payable warrant number. T two four zero seven zero five and the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
That's the Eversource electric bill.
Well, I guess, yes, discussion. This is sixty-eight thousand dollars that we won't have to, uh, pay once.
We have solely.
We finally get so, right, put together, so that's the significant impact.
Yes.
That we're working on, so.
I was thinking the same.
This has got called out separately.
Exactly.
Nice.
Really see it.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I have a yes. Um, I'm gonna ask anybody from the public, but I don't see anybody, so.
Well, I got something.
Yes, go right ahead.
I just wanna say, everybody enjoy the Super Bowl on Sunday. And then also Monday, fingers crossed, if my kid passes her DMV, uh, driving test, so she can take ourselves.
I won't be driving in, where is it, Barnstead?
Yeah.
Um, who do you got, Jason? Who do you have for the Super Bowl? Who do you want to win?
Hmm, well, I think the Chiefs would probably take it, but I'd rather not have them win.
Okay, alright. Very good. Uh, on, let's see.
Okay, I moved to enter into non-public pursuit into ninety-one A colon three, uh. Section two personnel matter.
Second. And seconded, um, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
With the coil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great week. Back to you soon.
Hi, guys.
Hi, everyone. We're back in public session after being in non-public session. We had three different, uh, non-public sessions. And for the first and second issues, um, I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely because it could render a proposed. Action ineffective. Um, so I don't know, we'll take that motion up.
Second.
Motion made and seconded? On the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes.
On the third issue, um, we took up a non-public, I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely. Because, uh, it could adversely affect the reputation of a member other than this.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, Christian Coyle?
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And, um. I move to, uh, adopt and send the letter regarding a ninety-one A request. Um, dated today, February eighth, twenty twenty-four, um, and I as clerk will sign the letter.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote no for the reason I don't like the way it's worded.
And I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion's made, adjourn, follow the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.